Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining us again for another weekly Town Hall meeting here on Springmore 1341. However, some of you or maybe all of you may not be able to see me right now. We have got, we've heard from several people that the in-house TV channel is either not working in certain areas or perhaps not working at all. However, we are gonna record this as normal and it will be up on the portal, so we still want to go ahead and move forward with the broadcast. I suspect there may be some calls, but if you are watching this and one of your neighbor calls and says, "Hey, I can't see Brandon" or hear him or whatever, they're probably happy that they can't, but you can just tell them that, that we know there's some technical issues, but we are recording it and we'll have it on the portal just as soon as we can, once Daniel records and puts it back up there. And as always, we'll get a recap memo out by Friday. We moved it to Friday now. Now that we got the mailman coming back, we don't, the stuff goes out on Thursday night, so we'll have it to you on Friday as we used to do on Thursday. So anyway, so we'll, we'll just move forward with that. I think it's only appropriate to start out today is just kinda mentioning and just remembering Judd Ammons. I think everybody knew Judd Ammons, who was the founder and developer of Springmore. He unfortunately passed away on Sunday morning. I received word from David Sunday, late Sunday morning that he had passed. And if you didn't know, he'd been in the hospital for a couple of weeks and had a procedure and, and then just, then stayed in the hospital and passed away in the hospital. So, so we just wanna remember him and his family. If you don't know his family, he's got a very big, loving family, four children. They're all great people. Most of y'all probably know David, who's very involved with Springmore, has worked here since the place opened and still actually our CEO of Springmore and very involved. And so much things, so many things that Judd and his wife did for Springmore and all of Raleigh, just really good people. I was fortunate enough to know Judd for the five years I've been here. I think a lot of people knew Judd or have a story about Judd or connected with him in some way. But if you're a newer resident or you happen not to know him, you really missed meeting a great guy, just a very down-to-earth guy, one of the smartest down-to-earth people I've ever met, which is really neat because as successful as he was and as smart as he was, you would never know it. And it's kinda people I like to associate with and, and very glad I had the opportunity to know him and work for him. So I'm excited to continue his legacy and his vision that he and the other founders had for Springmore and continue that to go for many, many years to come. So, so thanks, Judd, for everything. We appreciate it. On more positive news, you will not have to hear me ramble about the Atlanta Braves anymore. They unfortunately suffered a 4-3 loss on Monday against the Dodgers, who are in the playoffs now, or excuse me, I should say World Series. The Dodgers won the first game. So anyway, I will not be rambling about that, but I will offer a bit of suggestion or perhaps pull for the home team. Home team being Tampa Bay. That may, you may think, well, why is that the home team? But as some of y'all may know, the Durham Bulls is the AAA team for the Tampa Bay Rays. So everybody that plays on the Tampa Bay team right now has came through Durham to get to Tampa. So a lot of the people y'all may have seen, if you go to the games, if you, if you watch them in the, in the regular season, a lot of people I remember, like Blake Snell pitches for them, he's an awesome pitcher, seen him pitch many times. G-Man Choi, he's the first baseman, seen him play. I'm sure Holly's getting all this down for the, for the recap memo. So, but anyway, it's pretty cool to see those guys, you know, 20 minutes away in Durham and now they're, you know, eight hours, 10 hours away in Tampa playing in the big leagues, making big money. So it's pretty cool. So I advise you to pull for Tampa Bay. Kinda remember they're the hometown team of Durham Bulls. So, all right, well, we'll get on to more interesting things. I wanted to first start off talking about the testing in the Stuart Health Center. We have done very well with our cases. And as, as I think everyone knows, we were doing weekly testing on staff and residents to our case numbers and our outbreak status of two or more, but we have no cases currently at Springmore anywhere of any residents or staff, especially the Health Center, which is very important. So with having that, that good news and having that continued success, we only have to test employees only monthly. So by, so the end of this month, we will only be testing staff monthly. That is what we're required to do and that's what the state will pay for. If you remember, the state's paying for all the testing, so we have, so if we wanna be reimbursed, we have to follow what the state is telling us that they will pay for. And we're only required to do monthly testing for staff only. The good news is that we still have plenty of tests that we have on site, that we can test anybody at any time, anybody being Stuart Health Center resident or any staff member that is showing symptoms, so we can have them sent off to our lab that we use Mako and have those results back within 48 hours. So again, we'll continue to test people if they are showing symptoms or if there is a cause for, we think, residents or staff to be tested. So, so that is the good news. So we'll continue to do that. The good news is the residents of the Health Center won't have to be subjected to testing every week and also all the staff as well. But that's proved to be very well and we're thankful for that. So to coincide with that, our chart hadn't changed much recently, which is really, really good. So you've seen probably zero on there for a while. And moving forward, we're gonna continue to have the chart up on the portal and we're gonna continue to have it posted, but we're not gonna update it unless there's a change. So, so Daniel may be hearing this the first time, but unless there is a change, which would be a positive case, it is gonna, it's just gonna stay where it is. It takes some, not forever, but time and effort to, to post them and put them on the portal and just change the date every day. So it's just very easy just to look at it. And if you see that hasn't changed, there's been no, no updates. But I can assure you, if there is a change or there is an update, you will see a new chart up there with a new date and with a new case. So just FYI on that. So yeah, that's just something we think there'll just be, they're just kinda coincidental. We're doing the testing, kinda taper that back. Of course, we'll keep everybody informed about that, but not changing every day as it has in the past. I wanna talk about a couple of current policies that we have. I've had a couple of people ask recently about what, what current policies do we still have mandated at Springmore? And, and, and nothing's changed since we put those in. We still have restrictions on the Stuart Health Center visitors. We still have restrictions on the independent visitations. You still have to be screened. We still have a limited capacity in the dining room, limited capacity in rooms and parlors, exercise rooms, everything. Everything is, is very much restricted and, and limited. So, so, so nothing has changed with that. What we are doing is trying to give more choices, hence the word choices and options for people that want to participate in that. So you'll notice that there are several trips planned on the Springmore bus. We can only, only accompany six people on the bus, but they are going to the grocery store and to the store once a week. We felt like that was important for residents to have that option. Again, option and choice if they want to go. Many are not able to drive, as many of y'all are, some may not have family close in town and, and they've been getting their stuff delivered for a long time. So we want to just offer that for the few that may want to participate. Again, it's like anything at Springmore, even before COVID, everything's optional. Don't have to come to the dining room, don't have to come to exercising, don't have to ride on the bus. It's all here if you want it. So we're just trying to offer that again for the ones who do want that. So, so I just wanna be mindful of that, that, that no restrictions have changed. Everything's the same. We're just trying to offer a few more things for residents that choose to do so. So just wanna try to clear that up. Let me see what else we have here. The visitations for the Health Center, I wanna talk about that for a second. That's been going really, really well. We've been able to provide indoor visitations. I think this is the second week that we've been able to provide that. Once we were out of outbreak status, which was less than two cases for 14 consecutive days, then we could allow visitation to take place inside. But even better, we were allowed to do outside visitations even before that happened. And those will never go away. So the good news is we were doing outdoor visitations before indoor. And if we would happen to get a new case or two or three or 10, which I pray we get no more, that we can still continue to do outside visitation for spouses and for families. What will change is indoor visitation. So if we get a new case in the Health Center, the indoor visitations will have to cease until we have, until we have no cases for 14 days. So the visitation is tied with cases. That's why the continued testing is important. And that's why we continue to test people if we feel like they have any symptoms. So, so I wanna talk about that. Let's see. Next, we'll go into a couple of announcements with Pathways. Pathways, we got some stuff going on. I'm not gonna hit all this stuff. Holly will provide all this in the recap, but I just wanna hit a few things on health and fitness. For the Wellness Center and the pool, we're excited to announce that the Wellness Center pool hours will be, will be expanding. Beginning next Monday, the pool will be open from 5:00 to 8:00. So I think that is roughly what it was before. There's still a lot of restrictions, reservations, require time, limited time in there, gotta do, do a couple of other things. So there's about five or six bullet points I'm not gonna read, you'll see on there. But again, we're gonna offer the expanded hours, but there's still restrictions that go along with that. Reminder, no guests or visitors or staff members are permitted in the pool or Wellness Center during this time. We wanna make it available to as many residents as possible before we open it up to anybody. And as far as North Village, the bike and the new step, which is located in the Great Room, will be moved back to the Fitness Center later this week. And by moving those back in there, we'll be able to open two more spaces in the Great Room to have 10 people exercise instead of eight. We've still gotta be socially distanced when we exercise and Carrie's got the blocks with tape. So, so we're gonna move those out and again, give, give the choice of more people participating in the activity, excuse me, in the fitness classes and then, but they can still use the bikes and the new step down in the North Village Fitness Center. So with the more information of that, again, those are just kinda the highlights. As far as spiritual wellness from the chaplains, they continue to have their Vital Conversation groups every Wednesday at 3:00. So after this, they will have that. And at 3:15, the Vital Conversation Book Study, which is the first two groups that have kind of got past their Vital Conversation and they're on to the Book Study Group at 3:15. We have Vespers Sunday as normal. Dr. Alan Schwartz from Highland United Methodist will be preaching. Next Tuesday, Grief Share with the chaplains. And very important, next Sunday, well, not next Sunday, Sunday, November 1st, is that next Sunday? Yeah, not this Sunday, next Sunday, November 1st will be our annual memorial service. So let me read this. It's not gonna be much different, as you can imagine, from, 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 from the years past. I think everybody knows each year Springmore traditionally holds a special annual memorial service to remember and celebrate the lives of our residents who have died in the past year. With the uncertainty of this year, we have postponed this event in the hope that we could once again welcome outside of family members and friends to attend. We continue to move hopefully toward that goal, but we're not yet able to include those from outside of Springmore for in-person, in-person worship at this point. We will hold a service of remembrance on November 1st, 2020 at 7:00 PM for all those who have died since spring of 2019. We can accommodate a maximum of 25 people per state ordinance, it's Springmore residents. So it's gonna be 25 Springmore residents in person, but also live streaming will be available on 1341. So also have a recording of the service and it will be, it will be made available to outside family members afterwards. So again, on the 1st of November, we'll have our service. 25 people can come. You just need to register with the chaplain. So I guess it's first come, first served. So the lines are probably hot now, calling Lori and Juliana about getting in here. And again, it will be broadcast over 1341, so you can watch it in your house, have a cup of coffee, beer, wine, choice of beverage, and then we'll make it available for your family members to be streamed afterwards. All right. Next, I wanna talk about dining for a second. We have a really, really awesome event tonight that I have no doubt that y'all are going to enjoy. Dining Service has put a lot of time and effort into this. It's our big Autumn Soiree. I think we all probably have expected by now, we know that Christmas at Springmore is gonna be a little different this year. We're not gonna have a mass meal. I don't know if that's been announced yet, but surprise, we're not gonna have a huge mass meal like we normally do just because we can't. But we got some other really cool things planned for Christmas at Springmore this year, which we'll be talking about later. So I'm not gonna talk about that right now. That will be more of a surprise to come. But we are having a really cool event outside before it gets cold, our Autumn Soiree. It's gonna be all outside and it starts at 5:30. We have tents in both North and South Village. So it's on both sides of the street, just like a Christmas at Springmore would be, same food items at each place. And just for a reminder, again, it starts at 5:30. You may enter North Village from outside in the front, walkways that lead to the patio or from inside. South Village, you can enter from outside or come through dining. There'll be a wide variety of foods from Tapas. You know what Tapas is, Daniel?
Tapas?
No, yeah. Holly from downtown. Holly says small plates. That's exactly what it is. Me and Daniel are not small plate type of guys. I'm more of an entree person, meat, potatoes, but these will be small plates. But it's as much as you want. You'll have a clam bake, so small plates to a clam bake to a fall-inspired cocktails. So you can, again, beverage of your choice and more and much, much more. There'll be, there'll be places for people to sit and enjoy their meals. The dining room and the bistro and the grill will be closed for dinner on Wednesday. If there's any questions, please call the dining office. There are other meals to be delivered if you do not want to attend. So nobody's gonna go hungry. Again, this is choice. Come if you'd like. We hope you do. Even if you wanna get it, grab a few things. We got 42 acres, so you can go, go to the gazebo if you want to and sit with another friend. But do make sure you do socially distance, but there is plenty of room to enjoy and spread out. Again, this is a, this is a fun fellowship time. I consider us all family versus all our bubble, in my opinion. So hopefully, hopefully y'all will come and enjoy that. But again, there's plenty of room to spread out and enjoy each other. So tonight at 5:30, I look forward to seeing everything. It's gonna be really, really cool. Second to last thing, it comes from marketing and Beth Holden. I don't know if you guys know about this yet or not, but I'm gonna tell you if you don't. Beth made it sound like y'all do, but said, "Please remind the residents of the Halloween Parade on Saturday, October 31st, which is actually Halloween, beginning at 1:30. The parade route will begin on Springmore Drive near the front entrance. It will continue on Springmore Drive in the front of the houses and villas and then turn onto the sidewalk and run in between the houses," I mean, excuse me, "and run between the villas and east apartments. The parade will then pass through the breezeway and turn left by the employee break room to parade by Stuart Health Center." Just a reminder, this was an idea from the, from the Greystone Neighborhood Association, which we're a part of, and it's for pure enjoyment only. And as, and as Beth said, it should be spooktacular, like that. Spooktacular. So I like that. But again, you don't have to give out candy. You don't have to buy some cool special PVC pipe and slide it down or have some weird machine that I've heard about on the radio that's gonna just disperse candy to people. All you gotta do is just sit there and enjoy the kids. Probably see a couple of witches, maybe some Power Rangers, if those things are still around. And it's just for y'all's enjoyment. So don't have to worry about candy, just something for y'all to look forward to and see the kids. So anyway, what'd I say?
Candy?
Yeah, yeah. If y'all wanna throw candy, I'm probably fine, but, but that is not required. But it's just, just for y'all's enjoyment. So anyway, I think that's really cool. We did that at my last place. We prayed up and down the halls and actually do trick-or-treating. I like to do that again. But again, in this terrible year of 2020, we're just gonna do a parade. So don't worry about the candy. Okay, so Daniel's saying that, okay, so on the portal, there's information about the parade and even a map route. So what I just described on there, that's all in the portal under the announcement section. So that's most of y'all, if y'all use the portal, you probably know that. But if not, you'll see it when we do the recap memo. And y'all, y'all've got over a week to plan to make sure you come see the kids at Greystone. Brad may even have his kids up here. Brad's a Greystone resident. All right, Little Mermaid will be here. I will not give you his address. He might wanna toilet paper his house, so we will not do that. So lastly, I wanna announce some really exciting news. If y'all watch the news, I've seriously not watched the news in, I don't know, probably a week or so. Been inundated with baseball and can't take any more bad vibes. So, but y'all may have heard, if you do follow the news, that the current administration is partnered with Walgreens and CVS, CVS slash pharmacist, Omnicare to provide the COVID-19 vaccine, vaccine, once it is available. So I assume this has been in the news. Again, my news is pretty much daily emails from the industry news and things I see on certain sites, but not any actual TV news. But again, the Trump administration has partnered with Walgreens, CVS slash Omnicare. If you're not sure what Omnicare is, they're a huge 800-pound gorilla of long-term care pharmacy that CVS bought. They are the cookie cutter of long-term care pharmacies. We don't use them because we're not cookie cutter and they don't, in my opinion, and I'm not pumping this up, they don't provide the best service, I, in my opinion, to, to communities because you're kinda dime a dozen. However, being a dime a dozen may not be a bad thing here because we've got to administer a ton of vaccines when it's available and it will be available eventually. We're not sure when, but all this is pre-planning. Obviously, we know there's no vaccine available yet, but it seems like the administration is pre-planning for this and they are trying to get everything in place. So when it is available, it will be ready to roll out. The good news is we, as a long-term care facility, will be, will be some of the first to receive that and will be free of charge. So the open enrollment for that started two days ago on the 19th, and we have to pick if we wanna use Walgreens, CVS, or our current pharmacy provider, which is a company called Medipac out of Winston-Salem. They're a smaller company, more regional, that we would like to use, but we also have to be assured that they're gonna have the manpower and the vaccines as one of the big companies will. So we'll decide that at a later date of who we're gonna use. We'll probably pick one of the big companies first. And then once we are assured that our provider can handle it, we'll probably drop them and use Medipac. Don't quote me on that. I'm just, I'm just kinda telling you what I think. But again, this is all just pre-planning. But we, as being a long-term care facility, will have first crack at having the vaccine. Again, it's not mandatory, I don't think, for residents. It's not for staff yet. It probably will be eventually, but it may be available as soon as the end of the year, but perhaps not. That's all. Sure, everybody has their opinions on that and what they gotta go through, but I can tell you what you hear on the news or what you don't hear on the news, that I personally have received an email from Health and Human Services that we are pre-planning and we have to pick a pharmacy provider for when this is available, that we do offer it to everyone free of charge. So that is the gospel truth, not fake news. All right. I don't know if y'all saw any of that. We'll tell if y'all, huh?
We haven't got any calls.
We haven't got any calls. 7054. We're only down to two more broadcasts after this. We got November, dang, the phone rang. I thought for sure, just kidding. I thought for sure we would get through with no phone calls. Now, we have November and December, we're gonna do another broadcast. We'll kinda phase this out a little bit. Of course, I can always come back, but hopefully I'll see literally hundreds of people tonight and we'll get back to old times, but we'll still use this if we need to, which kinda go off a regular basis.
Why are there still no tables in the bistro?
The question is, why is there still no tables in the bistro? We have just decided not to move forward with that yet. That's one of the things that we have just still kinda restricted on and we have not moved forward. We have a lot going on in dining right now, planning for a lot of things, trying to still, we're still delivering food, we're still doing takeout. Obviously, we still have the dining room open at limited capacity and the grill's open for, for full menu for takeout, but we have just not been able to, to move forward with the grill and bistro yet. But we will, but that's still a restriction we have in place. So just hang tight with us. I'm sorry we're not able to get that up yet. But with, it's on our mind, it's not forgotten about. We will eventually open it, but it's just, that's just not been the right time for us yet.
Are they allowed to have an upholstery company come in and clean their furniture?
Sure. So the question is, can you have an upholstery company come in and clean your furniture? That's absolutely fine. I'd consider that a guest, just as a family member. You know, we are allowing IL visitations. We didn't restrict it to if it was got to be a, a son or a daughter or an upholstery cleaning person. So just have them check in at the front desk, have them screen, make sure they got a name tag, go straight to your apartment, clean your upholstery and head right out and that will be just fine. Good question.
What time does the cafe and the bistro close today?
Uh, what time does the cafe and the bistro close today? I don't, I don't think they were open at all. Yeah, they weren't, they weren't open at all today. Yeah, I think I read that earlier. Yeah, they, they were not open at all, unfortunately. So.
When is the University Theater gonna be open?
So we had that last question a couple of weeks ago. When is the University Theater gonna be open? I did not have the answer to that neither. I'm sorry. That's again, that's one of the restrictions that we've just, we've kept in place. We're trying to open as much stuff as we can as safely as possible and we'll continue to work with Leah on that. She's working on some glass classes this week, so we'll see where we're at with that. I know movie theaters are open, so we can probably work on getting that done. So yeah, I'll, I'll get you an answer to that. I'm sorry. We just have not been able to open that back up yet.
Will the capacity, the max capacity of people increase as well? Some people use against the equipment.
Yeah. So the question is, once the equipment is, from the Great Room is moved back into the, the North Village Fitness area, will the capacity increase? I think the answer is yes. I'm not sure what it is now, but I'm almost sure Carrie said that will, and the capacity will be three people. I think it'll be just three people only. So yes, I think that will increase, but there'll be a sign up to see what that is. I don't think there is one right now. So I think we, we've been doing it by appointment, but I think it may be all done by appointment. Again, there are some bullet points in there that I did not get in too deep. It was just too specific to just talk about. But if it's in there, Holly will put it in the recap memo. If not, you'll, you guys will see that.
One of the residents called with the impression that we have a housekeeper that was COVID-positive and been out for three weeks. Can you address that?
So the question was, a resident thought that there was a housekeeper out with COVID-positive and been out for three weeks. Yes, there was a housekeeper that had COVID and has been out, but they are past their 14-day period, so they're, and, and they're not here. So they're no longer active for COVID. So we have to keep track with who's active for the days of the reporting. So if you recall, we had an employee, unfortunately, that was very sick for quite some time. It was in the hospital, was out for months at a time. Well, there was a point where we just finally had to take him off the report because he's past COVID. He doesn't have COVID anymore, but he developed other medical, other medical issues. Same thing with this employee. So they're, they don't have COVID anymore, but they're still out. So, so that does not count as an active case.
When will the Carolina Room be open for the breezeway?
Uh, when will the Carolina Room be, I thought it was already open. Is it not? Yeah, I'm, I thought the Carolina Room was open. I could be totally wrong. I know it was open for a long time just for books, but I'll have Holly take a message of that. And we're just gonna have to get with some certain people. I just don't have the answers all out the top of my head, but we'll, we'll try to find out. And again, guys, these are great questions. So if you have these even before today, don't hesitate to call Leah, call Brenda, call Randy. They may, you know, that's what they're there for. Those are the people that really helped me with that. It's, that's an activity department. That's a maintenance thing that's gonna help me with getting the stuff back. So I'm here to help and I'll, as always, find you the answer, but don't hesitate even waiting before Thursday to call somebody to ask that before. We're all here to help you.
Are you able to guarantee that the Rays will win Game 2 of the World Series?
Yeah. I don't know if Blake, Blake Snell pitching?
I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Am I guaranteed the Rays will win Game 2 of the World Series tonight? No, I can't. Unfortunately, after they beat the Braves, the Dodgers, it's just, they're just terrible. I don't know. There's just, the Dodgers are just, they're, they're really good, actually. So I know more about them than I do the Rays sadly, because I had watched the Dodgers for so long. So hopefully the Rays will win. So wear your Durham Bulls gear and pull for the Rays. All right. That's it? All right. Well, I guess the TV did work.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we do have a lot of good information in here. I did, and I didn't go get into the weeds of everything, but Holly will have a lot of stuff in here. So yeah, we'll, we'll get that out to y'all on Friday. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to let us know. Do not hesitate to call anybody about these things. Leah, Brenda, Randy, housekeeping, Jennifer, anybody. We're all, all here to help. I am here. But, but don't, don't hesitate to call them and we'll do the best we can with. but, uh, but don't, don't hesitate to call them and we'll do the best we can with all we have to work with. And we look forward to hopefully seeing y'all tonight and see y'all in a couple of weeks. So thanks very much.